Well, welcome everyone. We'll go ahead and get started tonight. And I'm glad you all can make it. So tonight, we're going to be talking a little bit, actually just working together to start the design. You've seen information about it, maybe how much it costs, maybe where it is, all those things, but there's never really been anything about what is this going to look like? And how is it going to feel when we're in it? And we are the architects and builders of the project. So we're here to gather some information about what makes sense to you all, what are your values? So that we can help you design this building to be something that's made for your community. So that's the big goal of tonight. A couple of things is exploring a few of the opportunities that you have for high performance schools and what that means. And then talking about the character qualities and values that you guys have in Dove Creek. We want to hear those and we want to understand what you all know about Dove Creek, that we need to know about Dove Creek. So a little bit for introductions first, my name is David Kurtz. I'm an architect with the Neenan Company. And Neenan is who the school district has hired to do the design and construction of this project. So we're getting a little bit of jumpstart here before the bond. Hoping, of course, all of us hoping that the bond will pass, but this is a little exercise to say, well, as we're moving closer and closer to that bond, what do we, what do we think about this building? What, what is the design of this building? So I'm gonna pass.
I'm Chad Norton, I'm pre-construction manager. So I help with budgeting, you all the way up to procuring subcontractors and contracts and all that. Up to construction, then I kind of not as involved with the construction piece of it. On the day-to-day side while project management, I kind of hand it off to that point.
Charles Van Warmer, project architect. I've been around through the master plan and the best process in helping with bond both years. I'll be taking the project all the way through construction. And yeah, look forward to get going on this project and whatever.
Hey, everyone. I'm Paul Vanderheiden. I'm the interior designer or interior designer with the Neenan Company, been pretty involved in this project from the beginning and thinking of some ideas and some of the collaborative discussions that we've been having with the staff and administration over the past year, year and a half, I'd say. Been present for a lot of those and excited to bring your vision to life for your kids on the inside of the school. Years. I also have Angela here with us. Choose yourself, Angela.
Hi, I'm Angela Hampton. I'm in the marketing department and the graphic designer at Neenan Arch Construction. I've been helping with your marketing material for your bond. So a lot of the signage and posters come from me. So, all right. Thank you all for coming tonight. This is great.
And so like I mentioned, we'll be doing two things tonight. One is talking a little bit about opportunities for high performing schools. So that one is a little know about high performing schools and want to to, if we talk about these different concepts, what of those concepts is really exciting and interesting to you? That might want to be a highlight feature of the building. And then character and qualities of Dove Creek specifically. So we have a activity to talk about that. And with both of those, we'll get into what kind of ideas are sparked then? What kind of building design ideas come out of those concepts that we're hearing from, from you all? So. Um, let's see. Well, a little bit about history, we've helped the school district with a master plan. There have been some previous work sessions there last year, if some of you happen to attend a design process we did during the master plan, which is about what do we need to be looking at? So that was really all encompassing for the district. So we've had a few of these sessions, even in the interview that we did a little bit ago, we asked the interview team from the school some questions about the community that will help us kind of on our way of designing this project. So there have been a few that you've seen a plan to the building. We know it's, it makes a lot of sense to have it on the north side of the property and that's probably where it will be. But what you see as where the rooms are and exactly how it's laid out is really up in the air still. We wanted to make sure that we, we knew there was enough space that it would fit and that we figured out it would cost this thing. But really coming up with a design and building is, is quite a few things. There's the program of spaces, which is all the different spaces. There's the the conditions of satisfaction that we gathered in the master planning process, what the district is looking for in a project. There's the schedule and the budget that we're trying to hit. But then there's a couple of other things. There's the the values and the character qualities of the area, which we really haven't talked about in master planning or coming up with a budget yet. And then there's the qualities of a high performing school. So those are the two things that we say, all these come together to make a design of a building. And these two, we haven't really focused much on. So we want to do that tonight with you all. So a little bit of context before we get in, I'm not sure if everyone here has seen the plan, but I think it's been out there. I think a lot of people have. But if this is your whole school site from Memorial Hall, the Rock Building where we are, the existing middle high school and this red dashed line where the existing elementary school is, the idea is that there would be a new elementary at the north side of the site. The old one would be demolished, that would become parking. As we get a little closer, I mentioned the floor plan, it can change. This is a plan that works and fits. So we're going to talk about this a little bit tonight and about what might make sense for you all. So we are working towards a schedule of designing the project over this winter so that we can start construction by the time we get to school. And it's one of the reasons why we're here today instead of the bond passes to do any work. Cause we feel like there's a lot of work to do between now and next summer. And this time of is really important for, important for all you that are staff members of the school. You'll see here, we have a staff work session also. This is a time when we're going to talk a little bit more detailed about the program and about the actual spaces that you all work in and get that detail of the plan. Also, we'd like to talk to students at this time as well. This is, our goal is to have that all happen before Thanksgiving happens. That's this little white spot right here on this plan. So that, oh, I'm sorry. That's Christmas, isn't that? That's what that white spot is. So sometime between now and, and Christmas is to be able to have more detailed staff meetings around here. This acronym here, CDP is our collaborative design process. That's another design session that we'd like to do with the district after the bond passes. So by focusing tonight only on character and values that you have as a community, it really helps us move to those design sessions where we can be talking about the nuts and bolts and the shape of the building and all that. Okay, one more bit of context. Just as part of this whole bond process and what, what everyone's voting on, the total project is a $22 million, 997, 20, 22 million, 997,623 dollars. That's the total project cost. To help people understand what that means in a total breakdown. This green part of the pie is the actual school construction itself. So the school construction doesn't cost that much. That's how much the district with the state grant is requiring for the, the whole project. So there's a number of owner, we call them owner costs or school district costs. The school district has to hire other professionals, kind of like our take back here to help with the construction process that aren't the Neenan Company. The state also requires the school district to have contingency money and inflation dollars built into the project. So that's outside of our construction costs. And it's just money the school district is required by the state to also hold. Then there's design and engineering of the projects. There is Memorial Hall, which is a small portion of the overall project. The renovation of the outside of that building. And then demolition of existing buildings is a small piece too. So you'll see kind of how that overall cost breaks down and why that looks like, it always looks like such a big number. And then, you know, things break down from there. But that's kind of a general overview. We also threw in this graph, this was a question that came up in the community about, I remember how much this high school cost us back in 2002 when we did that, why is this so much more? And this is just a real simple graph. We actually pulled it from an industry. Industry study that was done from 2001 to 2022. Just the costs of construction overall. So everything just goes up. You can actually see here where we had the 2008, 2010 recession going on, everything just kept climbing after that. So this is really just what construction costing nowadays. It may seem like a lot, but that's kind of similar to something that wouldn't have cost very much 20 years ago. So. But a little bit of information about the, the costs, if you guys had some curiosity in that. 2002, I believe.
So that average percent of inflation every year.
About eight percent compounded year, but over the last 20 years. So on average, things go up on, on construction in the industry about.
But by comparison, if I'm taking that, I can't remember whether the old high school or six one, there's a date on that. I don't know. Steve will probably know.
You take five and 20 years later, you're about 25.
Eight percent inflation takes about six years to double. Six years, three times.
But then you're about 25. For the same five minutes. I think I and everybody sees it in housing market. Well, if you look truly over the last 20 years, what a house was 20 years ago to what it is today, something comparable is five times more.
But it's not going down.
It's not going down.
It did once and maybe that'll happen again, but nobody was really happy during this time. So.
The funny thing about this is it did one, but if you look at infrastructure and all that, at the same time, it was still going up. So I mean, as a whole, pieces went down, but not all of it went down. So. Inflation keeps going up, it's going to be hard to get things cheaper as a whole.
So, um, that was a little bit of context for just the project. We wanted to jump into one of these work sessions and the first one is about high performance school design. Are there any, any questions about context of the project before we jump into this idea of school design? All right. So, um, so over the past 20 years, there's been a real different push in school design. Also a different understanding of school design and of education. And I think all of you who are educators know, there's lots more information out there now about how kids learn and what are good practices for, for teaching and what are good environments for teaching within. And so lots of information and study out there about what makes good design to help with education of students. So really we call that high performance design and the high performance design is to improve the success of occupants. Not only to improve the success of students, but improve the success of the teaching staff and the rest of the staff of the school as well. So basically better outcomes for, for the people in the building by some concepts of how the building is organized and designed. So I would like to go through these just as a brief intro. And then we're going to go through a couple of examples of each one, just to kind of help you see some of these things that we think of when we come into school design talking. And then we'd like to talk to you about which ones of these seem most important to you all. So I'll start up here and I'll just go around the circle. Variety of education spaces is really about the fact that there are different learners, there are different ways people, spaces people can learn in. So having a classroom used to be the one and only way of teaching students. Now it's become very well known that, you know, some people work better in small groups. Some people work better with individual studies. Some people work better with large areas for presentation. Some people definitely learn better with hands-on learning. So all these different types of spaces somehow should be available within a school building to be able to have these spaces. Now, it doesn't mean like you need different spaces for all of these. It just means you need to have the opportunity to be able to teach in these different ways within a building. Ownership is based on having, one example, having students have something that they feel is for their like they feel is a space that's theirs and different from somebody else's. So an example for you might be with high school, middle school students using this, this building for lunch. The elementary students know that this part of the building is theirs and that part of the building is shared. So there's a little bit of ownership there that they have. I think another big one is student display. So having spaces for students to see the work they're doing and be proud of the work they're doing. That's kind of student featured, but ownership of the community to have local features within a building, that means something to the community or were created by people within the community. That helps with that sense of pride of the space, not only for the students, but for the community. So all that makes the space perform better really for the community. And community access in the building is another part of ownership. You'll see I've got arrows going all over the place on here. Cause some of these concepts connect with each other. And I'll start with security. So having a sense of pride, which is an ownership of the building connects to security. So when people have a sense of pride of the school space, there's a higher level of security of space. Cause people are there watching it, proud of it, want to make sure it's a safe place. So safety and security is definitely an important part of schools and it's, you know, not only it's safe approach, safe perimeter, being secure in the room, but it's also those safe spaces within the school. So things like social retreat, the ability to someone who's more of an introvert to be able to have a place that they're comfortable in. It's not always everybody on display all the time. So those are important things to think about. The ones that connect to some of the other concepts are passive views and entry experience. So the communities and parents experience coming up to the building and entering it. Does it feel like you're closed off from everything inside? Is there a welcoming approach, yet secure? Like, how does that look? Those are important things to talk about. And these are connected to the next concept of openness and connectedness. Because having some connection from one part of the building or for, for a person to see what's going on somewhere else in the building and having a connection to what's happening is important for the space. So student access to teachers, connection to other activities that are going on. Visible opportunities as in like, I can see something that happens in the art room or in the library because just as I'm walking down the hall, because that's something that's interesting that I might want to get involved with. So having that visual connection to these opportunities in the building are important. And then also connection to the community. Schools, connection to what's really going on out in the world, like out in the community and having some connection there is, is important. So all those connections are important. And then connecting to the next concept is a connection to the outdoors, which helps with this healthy environment that we are all in. So healthy environment itself as a as a need or a goal within a space is great for students. So everything from air quality, lighting quality, acoustics and temperature of the space, probably a big one for you all right now. It makes the space so you're not stressed about something else while you're trying to learn a, a new thing. So just that space that's healthy for everything. There's an arrow that connects back to safety on this one because stress-free environment. A safe environment for being stress-free is also part of healthiness and healthy environments. And the last one up here is flexibility. So schools today need to be flexible because in five years, 10 years, 20 years, education is going to be different. You're going to find new ways and you're going to have new crops of students who are needing different things. So having a flexibility of a building space is going to be very important. Being able to modify walls, being able to have multi-use spaces. Being able to allow for some growth within space. We wanted to really quick next, go through some examples of each of these and show how that, how these concepts show up in school spaces. I'm doing a lot of talking. Do you guys want to talk about some of these?
Yeah. So for a variety of space, these are a couple of images of past projects. All the images that you will see up here are Neenan completed projects, many of which we all have worked on together. A few of these kind of illustrate different types of learning environments, right? This is in our classroom that has a variety of different types of uses that you can have in the space. You can see these are different than traditional desks, right? They're a little bit taller. So that adds a bit of variety here. As well as being able to have the student display functions that are part of that connectedness that we talked a little bit about right there. Connection to the outdoors, right? You can kind of feel a lot of these concepts present in that image. This is actually of a corridor space. So this is a demonstration that a hallway is not always just a hallway, right? This can be a learning space. It can be a small group space. It can be a project display space. And in some of those things, as we start looking at the, at the buildings, that, those are kinds of areas where we can look to say, this is where we can have multi-use things going on and provide that variety of different learning environments for students. This is a more traditional classroom look, but as you can see right outside of the door right here, you can see there's a work area that's directly adjacent to that. Where small groups may be able to go out and utilize that space as well. And there's a variety of different things that are in here, book storage and furniture types and things like that. Again, emphasizing some of the connectivity that's also demonstrated in this one. This is a school space that really has, this is a large variety of area where the students can learn in small groups in here. They could do small presentations around a screen. They could also have lunch in this space. So this was really a multi-use type of flexible space in that project. Lots of different things going on in here and variety of different things represented. Safety, Charles, you want to talk a little bit about this one?
So with safety, there's kind of two aspects to it. There's the deterrent from people who are not welcome on the space. But then there's also the feeling of security within the space from the users. So it starts in the outdoors, having areas that are secured, secured and kids being able to be grouped and feel safe in their own special environment. Doesn't always have to look like security. Some, and sometimes we will arrange buildings and arrange spaces so that there's a lot of visible visibility to that space. There's a lot of classrooms and a lot of individuals that will be able to passively monitor those spaces. So sometimes it can look more active. Sometimes it can look more passive. In a lot of entry spaces, you can create welcoming and opening environments that still have the technology incorporated to keep them very safe. Access control to, you know, the vestibule space with an additional requirements to get into the rest of the building while still keeping like a lot of glass and not making it feel like, you know, that it's this kind of lockdown area, but it kind of is. So there's a lot of ways that we can take a building and make it very secure and maybe not always feel like it's for the people using it, for the kids using it, they don't feel that the way maybe somebody who's not supposed to be there would feel it. So.
There's an example here, this is what you'll point out. At the end of, you can see these doors right here that kind of close off, this would be a public area, right? Access this. And then these doors, which are hardly visible right there are really a great student space. You have classroom wings that are strategically positioned behind doors where you could have it be immediately secured. And that public, really passively, it's not very noticeable, but your passivity.
Absolutely. And a lot of times we'll have those as automated by the front desk, that sort of thing where you can kind of a certain hours. Maybe it's on a time clock, you're kind of shutting down the rest of the school. And now it's for like public events or whatever it may be. So there's a lot of opportunity around there to secure certain, maybe not others. You want to speak for this one?
Sure. So openness and connectedness. This takes many different forms. Some of the previous images you saw demonstrate a lot of that glass invisibility here. This is a great image where you are really, this is the library, right? Or is this the art, art room? Art room. And then the red one is the library here too, right? So this is the standing in the cafeteria space, right? Where you have opportunities for social connection in the space. You can see we have a projection monitor right there. So this space is, has multi-use that is happening where there's not only social connection that are going on, but physical connection through the windows and the visibility to the art room, to the library and to the outdoors right here, out, out there. So you can kind of get a sense that this cafeteria space really starts to become very dynamic because of that sense of connectedness. This is a good example of the indoor-outdoor space. This is actually intended to be like an outdoor classroom area that's directly adjacent to some learning spaces. So this is an opportunity for teachers and students to come outside and have that connection to nature in the outdoors. And you have some fun features that really make that feel playful and like a fun choice for the students to make. This is an example of a culinary kitchen room. The connectedness here, you can see there's a lot of daylight in this image is really these kind of sliding doors that lead right out to again, another learning area right there where students could be practicing. This is actually a culinary space. So this is all about teaching food and life skills and those kinds of things. And having a space outside of that where students could debrief, where it's kind of separating the different types of uses, clean uses or messy uses. Those kinds of things. That's a very particular example, but that kind of connectedness really creates that variety of spaces that we're talking about.
Yeah, I can speak to this one.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. So healthy environment, as Dave alluded to. There's unique ways, artistic ways to provide acoustics and spaces that may not have the, the best acoustics. Maybe large, open kind of spaces that you're trying to kind of bring down. And doesn't that sound a little bit? There's opportunities to provide like ample light within the, within the space, diffuse light, good reading light for a library space. You have opportunities to diffuse light. There's just a lot of opportunities within the building for us outside of even just the standard kind of temperature controls and this and that kind of affect daylighting, affect acoustics and just kind of tailor each space to how they're going to be used.
A lot of these kinds of features really are based on research and methods that have been coming out many years right now that show the impact of sound and daylighting on our sensory perception and our ability to focus and you to stay focused about learning retention. But these are some of the examples and ways that we actually accomplish that while creating.
Okay. So flexibility, there's a few ways that this can go. One example is this diagram of flexibility. Winning, when designing this particular school, we created these kind of like storage room opportunities within the building and identified them as areas of future hallways for additions that would come up later. So at the point in time that these additions will be, be put in place, it's just a thoughtful way to have less, um, kind of disruption to the schools while they're in session. There's less design, there's less cost associated with future renovations. So it's just kind of thinking ahead along those lines and being flexible with the overall building design. And then as you get into these interior spaces, one example of having flexibility is these kind of multi-use spaces. This one in particular is a elementary gym, but also kind of has this stage space that can function for, for any of the school functions that are happening outside of those gym hours, after-school hours.
A large white space is an operable wall. Behind that is the music room. The music room then becomes.
It's got a really cool name too, right? Yeah, Jim and Cafeter. Depends how many you put in there all at once, but yeah. And lastly, this is other opportunity of hallways don't always just have to be hallways, as Paul mentioned earlier in one of the examples. This particular one kind of widened that space and took some of the additional space that was in the hallway. And kind of, instead of distributing it through, out the school, kind of had these like pod sections that widened out and put some casework in there and tables and created this kind of group learning environment within the hallway space so that it's not just a hallway. Kind of a unique space that functions really well. This is right down your alley though.
Oh, I know. I know. We'll get to it. You want to say a few about this one?
Sure. So ownership, some of the things we mentioned before was ownership of students within the space, which this is an example of students' display all through. It was actually these spaces and niches were designed for student display of the projects going on, of the projects to, to really, you know, let the students be proud of the stuff they were doing every day. But ownership in other senses are finding what's local to the community. In the case of Creed, when we built the school there, there was a lot of local craftsmen that were, that were doing, that were able to do woodwork.
And so we utilized them on the project and some wood product in this building. So they felt like this was part of their community that made this, this project. Similar in Telluride, we did the additions up there and they really wanted that to fit into the mining history. So they had some identity that fit into their town. But another example is in Sargent in the San Luis Valley. We, in this district had to take down some of their old historic buildings in order to, to build new. Their older buildings just weren't working anymore. But they had these beautiful seats in their auditorium and we were able to salvage those, refurbish them and put them back in their new auditorium. So they, even though it was a new building, new space, they had this history of, of their community within their auditorium. So all of these are ways that tie the students back to their own history, their students to their own work, and the community to the, the history and, and the flavor of the town. That makes it something unique and makes it something that both students and community are proud of.
This is a nice segue in our second exercise that we're going to do later today. A lot of the questions and considerations and we're going to be hearing from you all really around how to generate ownership in this building. Meaning what does the building represent? What does it mean to the community? What are kids going to remember during their time here? What is it going to mean to you all? That feeling of, of a bit of an emotional connection to the, to the building now going and going forward into the future, where that sense of ownership really starts.
What is a way we could do this plan so that as most, as many classrooms as possible can face north? North is this way, north is that way. So what can we do to see if we can get as many classrooms as possible faced north? And the other thing that came up is the enrichment classrooms, art and other ones like that start to happen later in the afternoon anyway. So they're not as affected as the, the basic classrooms are. So that was one thing to think about. So the idea of classrooms up here then says, what if gym was down there, which kind of makes some sense. If that's what the high school and middle school is using, it's closer to the high school and middle school. And also from cafeteria going directly out to playgrounds might make a lot of sense. So there's some functional features of orienting the building this way that may make sense, and I think we should look at that. The other thing we talked about with environment was the big temperature swings in this area between day and night in the spring and fall. There's like huge swings. So classrooms that are needing cooling on one side of the building might be needing heating on the other side of the building. So I think it's really important for us as designers to be thinking about individual zones for classroom. What's the, what's the mechanical system that can accommodate a hot side of the building and a cold side of the building? To be able to have that healthy environment and, and comfortable environment for everyone. So that was a big aha that I think is going to be important for you all. We talked a lot about operable windows and actually what I gathered from the conversation is there's probably more concern about having operable windows than there is about the, the nice feature of having them. So probably best overall not to, not to have operable windows as long as the temperature is easy to control within the classroom and able to be controlled. So that's one thing we talked about. So that was all about the environment side. Then we talked a little bit about variety of spaces. We talked about clustering classrooms potentially, kindergarten, first grade, second grade together clustered around a, a space. And second, third, or I'm sorry, third, fourth, fifth clustered around a space. And the conversation then went to, if you have an outdoor space outside the classroom, you need windows from the classroom that looks out. And then this gets into the security conversation of how much windows do you really want to be able to see from the hallway in? So this will be something, we need further kind of resolution on what's the best way to go about for the district? Is, is how open should the classrooms be to the spaces that could be outside there? How, how secure should they be? Oh, and if there are open spaces within hallways that we're letting students use as small breakout areas, even more so than we'd want that entry into the building to be very clearly secure so that the staff and students are both comfortable being out in the hallway space. So that leads us to security, I would say, I'm just handing it off to you guys.
Charles, you want to come over here?
Thank you. So as we think about security, we kind of start on like the site level and work our way down to the individual spaces, like the classrooms, admin, library. From a site perspective, some of the most important features that we had talked about was securing the playground space and having access from the school directly to it. So it's a continuous space from indoor to outdoor that's secluded from the exterior, you know, neighboring spaces. A secondary piece of that was to have a preschool space that had its own playground, that had its own fencing enclosure right out of the classroom. So once you're in that fenced-in space outside of their classroom, you can't exit that, you have to go back into the classroom. And then there'd be an outdoor space where they could, the parent drop off for preschool could come right in the building where everyone else is kind of funneled to the front door. Preschoolers get a little, little, for their own attention, their special attention, get to do their own little thing there. Yeah, so those are kind of the things that we were thinking about as far as playground and kind of connection of the building to the outdoors. Kind of secondarily, this plan that we were working with, we think does a pretty good job of separating where the parents would be dropping off is this kind of outer rim and right back out onto the site. Staff parking, parent parking in this, this other row, one directional. There's no kind of intermingling between those two. And then on the other side of that is this bus parking in which they, these gates would be open for the, for the playground space, because they would need to kind of cut through there to get to that central access point of the front of the building in the morning and then in the afternoon. So there'd be some gates kind of opening and closing, but we talked about how important it is to separate this drop off from this drop off, yet all accessing the front of the building. So you don't have doors, people flying in, you know, from every angle in the morning. So Paul, do you want to talk a little about, about access to the, to the interior of the space and how kind of that area functions?
So this is a very small little drawing, obviously, right? We're like drawing a vestibule on a site point. So sorry, you can't quite see that very well here, but I'll just talk through some of the things that we talked about. A lot of good ideas were, were thrown out. Essentially, and whether we end up shifting to a plan more similar, David was moving some things around and talking about how those program spaces might shift in the building. All of what we talked about here is applicable and are considerations that we're strongly going to be looking at no matter what the floor plan looks like. This plan right here showed a vestibule situated in between the admin area, just this orange block, and the library gymnasium space, which is what we've identified as being the primary like public spaces. Whether you have parents, other public folks coming to visit the library, or coming to an event that's hosted in the gymnasium. Those areas are really clustered together right here at the front of the building. But that single entry point, as Charles mentioned, through the vestibule. That vestibule has a variety of different options for how it can be configured. One that we do very commonly is direct access from the vestibule into reception. And doors that lead into the main hallway are secured and locked during the day. So between, other than the hours when students are arriving and really flooding through that front door, those doors are secured. And anyone who comes through the front door is secured inside of the vestibule and has to enter reception to speak with a receptionist and check in and be identified. Or in this case, if the, if the library desires public access, there's a door from that vestibule down to the library, which is visible to the receptionist and can be remotely unlocked. So that entire area becomes really nice, looks decorative, lots of glass. Everybody feels like it's nice and open, but it's designed in such a way that if somebody enters into that space, there has to be a choice made for them to be able to access the school. There is no direct access straight in there. We also talked about a set of doors located in the hallway somewhere that would just be just beyond the public space. So in this layout, you have access to the library, the gymnasium, some group restrooms with a set of double doors right here that can be propped open most of the time. And after-school hours or during some kind of public function, the gymnasium, those doors are closed. And it, with that single entry point right there, all the north part of the school becomes secured off to the public. So all of these areas with the teacher's belongings and different classrooms and student areas all then become secured. So with some simple things like that, those are kind of the, not passive, but active security measures. Technology-based. The other thing that we talked about are the passive security measures that are represented in, in this particular plan. Most notably is the way that the administration area is situated adjacent to one side of the entry and the library adjacent right here to the other side. Areas that are going to be staffed at a very high frequency with people in there who work at the school. This entire area, you create a very welcoming environment by having glass visibility looking out there. But what that provides is from Ty's office, from Charlotte's office, from the staff offices right here, they're able to see out over the entire entry. Anywhere that cars are approaching the building, coming up into the parking lot, they have direct visibility all the way across the street to see that. They have direct visibility of the, of the crosswalk in this example. The librarian right here also could have visibility directly out onto that space. So just the way that this is all oriented and the way that the building is positioned provides a lot of passive security for staff to be able to monitor and communicate with each other and see what's going on. We talked a little bit about how there tends, you made a great point about this, Chris, about how there's these kind of technological reactions that we make to trying to create security. And then there's also the intentional kind of training and understanding of the staff and how they use the building. And it is set up in such a way that facilitates behavior that creates security, that creates higher level of communication between each other. This kind of layout really facilitates and supports that effort. We had some other conversations about egress windows in and out of the classrooms, it's something that we consider. We talked about fire sprinkler systems. What else, what other ideas did we talk about?
Door security.
Door security.
There's a lot of options. Classroom lock sets to be able to secure those, lock those from here in the space and not allow somebody. Outside. Talked about security triangles, the ability to have only so much. You want view out of the classroom, you want view to those hallway spaces, but it should always also be a consideration that there's a space inside of classrooms for students to gather the entire classroom and not be seen from any of the visible spaces. So that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be in all the spaces all the time, but you can start to think of that and how you want to keep those spaces secure. Somebody looks in a window and doesn't see anybody, might just move on, something like that. I mean, think about those worst-case scenarios and how you can cover them passively with design instead of dollars, you know? There's, there's a lot of ways to do that, so. So all the way from that granular, granular level of the classroom, all the way to the site, taking like a lot of steps, a lot of opportunities to create the feeling of security, but then also as somebody from outside the community looking and saying, that's a really secure school. So kind of looking from both directions on kind of every level. Yeah, that was really good exercise, guys.
We got a question real quick, we got a couple of questions if we hop across.
Something that we talked about. Was accessibility, your camera system.
I'm sorry, yep. And I did write that down here. We talked a little bit about first responders, we have some good knowledge within our group. And we talked about, well, the access to the building with the Knox box in the front of the entry, so any first responders can come in. They open that box, which they have a key to from the department, and it's the, you know, card swipe or physical key to enter the building. They also talked about the ability to access the wifi. And then also some of the exterior security concerns with handles and hardware. I don't even have any on the outside of a lot of these gym spaces and stuff. You can exit, but you can't get back in, you got to go back under the front entry to get back in. So there's a lot of little points that we kind of touched on and made note of that we'll incorporate.
So the exercise to start to play with that question and answer it in your minds and hearts. We have a table over here with a bunch of words on it. So we'll take just a few minutes and we'll ask that everybody in the room who wants to participate, as you can choose in or choose out if you don't want to participate. We would love to have as many people as we can. Go over to the table there and find one word that you think most represents the character qualities that you want to instill in these kids, the character qualities that are most important to this community. Find one word on that table right there and pick it out. Once you have found that word, there's a series of images on the back to table here. Some are interior images, some are exterior images. Take your word that you've selected and go over there and find one image that you think most represents that word. In some way or another, right? And this is, this is not, well, it's not math and science, right? There's no right answer to this, it's really about, you're going with your gut, your intuition, what do you feel, right? Because we're not only thinking beings, right? We're feeling beings, there's, there's this hope side of us as well. So go with your gut, find the word, find the image. And then to recap, we're going to ask you to share just very briefly around why you picked that word and why you picked that image. And we're going to put them up on the board.
All right, excellent. Now we're going to, we're going to use the light. So Charles, will you help pick up the words here? And I'm just going to ask, just share very briefly why you picked that word, why it's meaningful to you and what you see in the picture. Why, why you pick the picture, why do you think it matches the word? We're going to put them up on the board here and have a nice swash. Let's go first, you want to start?
Yep, courageous, and I think that that word encompasses a lot. And I love this picture because it takes a lot of courage to get up in front of a bunch of people and share your ideas. While I hand my. A little bit of courage here.
Yes, perfect. Feel that one. Very good, all right. Yep.
Imagination.
Imagination.
Strong image for students to share their work and share what they know. And we appreciate it for what they put out there.
So you're referring to like the display space in that, you know, that you can really see each other's work. And in this one, you were referring to the whiteboards here in this image that people are standing up.
Right, and it looks like it's like an open common area.
Yeah.
And sharing their, their ideas in a common area in front of everyone.
They won't be seen. All right, who's next?
Little follow-up.
Oh, all right, we got two from you.
Enduring, but you have to be actively enduring. And cultivating because we're a pharmacy and we hope by planting that if something will come up. So like you're enduring, actively planting and trying and hope, there you go. And then I chose this space because it's like outdoors and there's kids mingling and talking and working together. That really speaks, I like that community, outdoor community area.
Which, which word is this associated with?
And I liked that one, it was indoors, but it's very homey, there's wood, there's plants.
I need like to say that for long.
And I guess community pride is what I was kind of going for. I mean, I just liked the picture of the little tower, like the little bean tower.
I wrote that right on the bean tower. What, what about the bean tower connects with pride?
Kind of iconic for, for the town.
But it's not actually beans.
Right.
It's wheat.
Everybody, everybody comes with a bean tower.
Yeah, it's iconic, it's a rich part of your history, right?
But you can see it a long ways off.
I'm gonna have a pleasant view. You can get a glimpse of it.
Awesome.
And that's kind of what everybody. True.
We have any picture of it? What'd you have, sir?
I got integrity.
Integrity.
Picture, I imagine that older student entering or helping the younger student.
Hmm.
Doing the right thing.
Is there anything about the, the building, the environment around that you thought was speaking to you?
No, I focus on.
Yeah, the people, great. A place for them to mentor each other. Yeah.
Yeah, those steps and that gathering space.
Yep. Excellent. What else? See you back there.
I picked grounded and I picked a picture of the ground.
Love it. Can you share just a little bit more about that? I mean, I know, I think that image is from somewhere close by here, but what is it about being grounded that's important?
Just remembering where you come from, remembering.
Yeah, tied a lot to like the five one as well, right? Then also.
I have perseverance and I have our rugged environment because um, a lot of us are connected to people that homesteaded here, so pioneers. And they've had to persevere to live here. And even if they aren't pioneers, it's still a hard place to live.
Beautiful. Very good.
And I like it that we can see that mountain from our school. And we should be able to see it from the new school.
Which, which one? I was writing. Yeah, okay.
I have hardworking.
Hardworking, great.
And I chose this picture because it's, it looks like a very studious room. And I love the tables.
Yeah, excellent. Yeah, there's, there's a bit of um, uh, like there's a kind of a formality to this room. Right? So many of these are playful and this one really feels like it's very studious and organized. What did you like about the tables?
Their shape is cool.
What did you like about the tables?
I like their shape and the individual table.
Yeah, they're kind of like a playful.
They're like a desk, but it's a little bit more than a desk. And there's not.
I, I really. Understanding how, what that's gonna look like.
And I like it. And I can follow that, the desk because it comes with like movement.
Tools must probably go together. Yeah, those all do process these together. You got this one.
Make on a new challenge. And also in the picture, my mind, it's a working man, working as a group. Talking about. Department.
Intelligent, hardworking, really facing the moment there. All right, couple more?
Longevity. We seem to. Those kids, I moved away, was gone for a year and we just seem to keep coming back. And I think. If this is here and you don't. For kids and grandkids. Very in the community. Our family.
Okay, anyone else?
I might tear up. I'm just, I'm, I'm that way. So I got, I've got resilience because I'm a person that they used to. And we're all. They are resilient.
They come to you differently?
And well, I think. It's a different these days. And they have to adapt and they have to change.
What about that image? Thank you.
Yes.
Are you holding that house? Awesome. Thank you all for your exercise. It's an abstract one and it's one that um. Yeah, is, is really inspiring. Because we want us to be resilient. We want the school to inspire imagination. All of these things, we come down to what is the form? How is this building going to be yours? Hey, we're gonna help design it, we're gonna help build it. It's gonna. Fifty, sixty plus years. As you said, kids coming back, families returning. Their kids going there, their grandkids going there. Legacy that you all have. We're going through this. Thank you for sharing that with us and we're gonna take this now, take a picture of it. And as we start to move forward into the design process, the bone passes. When the bone passes, all of this gets to come to life. In addition to all the stuff we talked about over here, all the rest of it. David, is there anything else you want to share before we close up for today?
I don't think so, but I know all the three of us, all of our minds are still already going like, oh, I could see how that here is. And that's some of that, I mean, there it, we want to keep on designing here with you guys, but we know there's a good time. And that's why what Paul said, we're gonna go, we're gonna take this, come back again after the bone passes. Do you hear that when we start bringing up ideas for design, what do you say? What do you think about this and the idea of resilience or perseverance? How does this represent that? So uh, this is really helpful to us for sure. It helps us say, why would I design something this way or that way?